Like to call this meeting to order for the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors for October 24, 2023. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Hall?
Here.
Little?
Here.
Schwartz?
Here.
Dralka?
Here.
Leland?
Here. Would everyone please join us for a moment of silence to reflect on our actions today? Thank you. Would you please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item one is the agenda received as proposed or as amended.
Second?
I'm moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Agenda is received. Item two is public comments. Is there anyone in the audience today that would like to speak on something that is not on today's agenda? Is there anyone on Zoom? Thank you. Moving on to claims and payments. This is a resolution that the Board of Supervisors approve expenditures and that the county auditor be authorized and directed to issue checks against the various settlement of such claims as allowed.
So moved? Second.
Swedner?
Good morning, Board.
Good morning.
Our total bill payments today are $719,607.33, and we're paying $2,899.33 from the 6040 Fund. Some significant payments today. We're paying American Pavement Solutions, Inc. for seal coating for $177,566, and Boulder Contracting for some bridge patching for $115,549.62. And the, that's really it. We're also paying the Allen Child Protective Services Center their $25,000 annual amount. Otherwise, everything appears to be in order.
Thank you. And moved and seconded. If there are no questions, please answer as your name is called.
Hall?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Dralka?
Yes.
Leland?
Yes. Item four, receive project updates from department heads and elected officials.
Good morning, Board. Ryan Brennan, Assistant County Engineer.
Good morning.
For the most part, things are pretty normal for our department right now. A lot of what we're doing is transitioning from our summer to winter operations, so just starting to get plows and wings and sanders and those things installed and ready to go. Also, we have finished hauling rock for the gravel roads for this year, so.
Thank you. Any questions for Ryan? Thank you. Anyone else?
Good morning, Board. Mike Hendrickson, Director, Blackhawk County Conservation. Just a quick reminder that the Region Seven REAP Assembly will be held tonight from 6:00 to 8:00 at Hartman Reserve Nature Center. You're all welcome. We'd love to see a lot of people. We do get a great turnout in our region, and so we will be discussing where we're going and the goals we have for REAP and electing delegates to prepare for the REAP Congress in January. So, hope to see some of you there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Any other updates? Anyone on Zoom that would like to present an update? Seeing none. Minutes approved for October 17, 2023.
So moved? Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Consent agenda. The following items are acted upon by a single resolution without separate discussion unless someone from the Board or the public requests that a specific item be considered separately.
So moved?
Second?
Second.
Please answer as your name is called.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Dralka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Leland?
Yes. Item seven, reports. Updates from Ben Delagardel Doing Businesses, Urban Services, Inc., regarding the Washburn Sanitary Sewer.
Good morning, Board. Ben Delagardel, Urban Services. Just update for Washburn Sanitary Sewer. Everything's running as normal. We are discharging right now for our full discharge. One update for that. If you can remember, earlier this year, I did some extra sampling and permit renewal process stuff. I spoke to you about that maybe in March or April. So I haven't heard back from them yet, so I did call them, and we, they're under an administrative delay right now for new permits, but they allow us to continue operating under our old permit, which expires in one week, October 31st this year. So I will update you when we do get the new permit, but we're just going to operate with the old permit for now. Usually, it's just a, really no new, for lagoons, it's no new restrictions or new sampling, but just a formality of paperwork and new dates. So I did want to mention that I have seen an uptick of service calls here since July, middle of July. We were on track for a really good year from January to June. We had 13 total service calls, which is lower than our, you know, we were looking at three per month, so we were five below our average, our, the average we hoped for, and we've had 24 since then, so pretty busy in October and September here. I haven't really narrowed down a reason. I think it's just ebb and flow of different seasons of pumps and hoping for that number to recede again, but did want to let you know that we've had a lot of pump rebuilds and service calls in the recent months. That's basically all I've got for you today. Questions?
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Can I ask, Ben, maybe you want to update us? I know I'm catching you probably off guard, but how you're doing with the ARPA project?
Yeah, so we've got 14 completed. We've got another maybe month or so hopefully to work. I'm hoping to get another 15 to 20 done, which would get us to about 35, 30 to 35, and then begin when the ground thaws and springs, so.
Any other questions, Michelle, or for anyone else? Okay. Thank you, Ben.
Yep.
Moving on to item eight, contracts and agreements. This is a resolution that the lowest reasonable bid received from Truck Center Companies, Elkhorn Heights, Iowa, bid opening September 12, 2023, for the purchase of two single-axle freight liner plus dump trucks and one tandem axle freight liner plus dump truck for the Blackhawk County Secondary Roads Department with a total bid of $370,184 be approved as recommended by Catherine Nicholas, County Engineer.
So moved?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Ryan?
Good morning, Board. As you recall, these were bids several weeks ago. We just had the one bidder from Truck Centers. There were some things that did need to change in the specifications that they provided as part of their bid. Some of that was due to this just being a new truck line for a freight liner, so we did have to just work through some of those with them to get that adjusted. But the dollar amount there is slightly different than what was in the bid opening. I believe it only varied by a couple thousand dollars, so nothing major with that, but we are requesting that you guys move forward with these, and later this year, we will be doing a separate bid for the actual truck beds and so, the snow equipment to go with them. We did separate those bids as part of that this year.
Anything to ask? Anything more? Anything more? Ryan, on your end? Okay, thank you. This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Dralka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Leland?
Yes. Item nine, other business. Resolution that the suspension requested by Diana Olinger on taxes owed for 23, 24 installments in the amount of $1,736 for parcel number 8913-28-204-005. I believe the address for that property was 1234 Eleanor Drive, and it be approved pursuant to 427.8 of the Iowa Code, and the county treasurer be authorized and directed to adjust her records accordingly.
So moved?
Second.
Moved and seconded. If there are any questions for Linda, hearing none?
Ellen?
Oh, yes.
Linda, do we know what lot that is? I mean, what, is it part of the lot adjoining the property, or what?
No, I think her address was the 12, as I looked at your email, it was 1234 Eleanor, so I think it's just her residence. Did you, were you able to hear that, Tom?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Dralka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Leland?
Yes. Item B, excuse me. Resolution that the tax sale certificate assignment for one vacant lot, parcel 8912-19-305-004, owners Percy and Phyllis Burt, located in Waterloo, Iowa, pursuant to 44631 of the Code of Iowa be approved, and said certificates of purchases tax sale be assigned to Delatan Asset Acquisitions, Odell Salas, as recommended by Linda Hensman, County Treasurer.
So moved?
Second.
And I believe this property was 1015 Mobile Street. Is that correct, Linda? I think.
And these are all vacant lots? There's no houses on them? Nobody living?
No.
Well, I think the one were property owners. There were owners involved at one time, and the others are vacant, completely vacant lot. Okay. Thank you. It's moved. Any questions? Further consideration? Okay. Please answer as your name is called.
Hall?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Dralka?
Yes.
Leland?
Yes. Item C, resolution that the compromise offered in the amount of $1,628 by Delatan Asset Acquisitions, Odell Salas, on taxes owed for one vacant lot located off Phillips and Martin Luther King Jr. Drive in Waterloo be approved.
So moved?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions? Comments, I believe? Please answer as your name is called.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Dralka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Leland?
Yes. Item D, resolution that the tax sale certificate assignment for one vacant lot, parcel 8912-19-305-005, owners Percy and Phyllis Burt, located in Waterloo, Iowa, pursuant to 446.31 of the Code of Iowa be approved, and said certificates of purchase of tax sale be assigned to Delatan Asset Acquisitions, LLC, Odell Salas, as recommended by Linda Hensman, County Treasurer.
So moved?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Are there any questions? Please answer as your name is called.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Dralka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Leland?
Yes. Item E is a resolution that the compromise offered in the amount of $4,113 by Delatan Asset Acquisitions, LLC, Odell Salas, on taxes owed for one vacant lot, parcel 8912-19-305-005, located off Phillips and Martin Luther King Jr. Drive in Waterloo, Iowa be approved.
So moved?
Second.
And moved and seconded. Is there any questions or comments? Hearing none? Please answer as your name is called.
Dralka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Leland?
Yes. Item F, resolution to approve the Sheriff's Office proposed Stanley Jail Security System upgrades project using ARPA funding.
Hello, Board. ALU IT Director. This is for the upgrade for all the Stanley equipment in the Sheriff's Jail. Can I answer any questions?
I guess the only question is probably, we don't have a cost for this item in there. I think you probably had provided a cost or estimate cost previously.
The cost, it's three different projects, but it totals just under $400,000.
Just under? Thank you. Nate, you're just, if you're there to answer questions or whatever, I was going to say, okay, I was going to say, did you want to add some? Yeah, we did. Yeah, same project.
Integral to the jail's operations.
Any questions, comments?
Moved to approve?
Thank you.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Please answer as your name is called.
Hall?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Dralka?
Yes.
Leland?
Yes. Item G, motion to submit the proposed purchase of wall-mounted workstations for the Public Health Clinic to Baker Tilly for ARPA eligibility evaluation.
So moved?
Second.
Probably are no questions. What I was going to say, don't, this one, don't we really expect this one to be approved? I mean, it's really all about the Public Health Clinic and their response, the COVID response, or not? Just curious.
Personally, I expect it to be approved. It's not guaranteed, of course, because it's a, it's a capital purchase. There's been, you know, some concern over those at times, but I would expect it to be approved.
Great. Oh, Caitlin, I see you're here too to probably comment on that. I know that was something that had been kind of on hold, but still being considered, so it just makes sense to move forward with it now.
Good morning. Yes, so we're kind of going back through previous requests and trying to make sure that all of our requests, we've submitted a questionnaire for. This one, we hadn't previously submitted a questionnaire for, to be evaluated by Baker Tilly through the process, so we're trying to catch it up to kind of make sure it's where it needs to be when we're ready to move it forward. And, you know, kind of to the workstations themselves, we've had a couple, I've had a couple of conversations with our clinic manager, and looking at the products, the, these are pretty universal products, where we could use them in our clinic now and use them in a different location later.
Great. That was going to be my next question. We can just use these wherever we go, so super, no need to delay. Thank you. It's moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item H, discussion and possible board action to discuss the Sheriff's Office, Sheriff Officers Evidence Processing and Storage Facility.
Yeah, I, Linda, I put this on again so we can decide one more or the other, so the Sheriff's Office can plan on the future, and also the employees that work in that older building that we have right now, they can do what they have to do for the future also, as far as health and so forth, so I propose that we make a decision on this one or the other, and I'll make a motion right now to approve it. Nate, he can address any questions. I know there's been enough talk about it, but I'm sure Nate would offer any other answers to your questions at this time.
Well, it's open for discussion. I was going to say, I don't know if anybody wanted to second it or not at this point, but if they do, fine. Otherwise, it was open for discussion, I guess.
I was approached by Chief Leibold of the Waterloo Police Department last week, and he'd like to pursue something jointly. Talked to Councilmember Bozen on Friday, and actually, he used to be the property evidence technician for the Waterloo Police Department after he retired from Waterloo Fire Rescue, and he identified three potential properties in the downtown area. The Salvation Army Building over here, our building potentially right here, and Johnstone Building. One of the things that Chief Leibold wanted to see is have us work with the county attorney and have it easily accessible in proximity to them. So Chief Leibold was in favor of a location in downtown Waterloo, and that's where Councilmember Bozen identified those properties. I did contact County Attorney Williams, and he also wants to be involved in these discussions to identify a facility and a location that we can support and take care of this need.
You know, we've had a lot of talk about that, and that's fine, but the question is, we have our new building on the agenda today to make a decision. We've waited and waited and waited, and so it's not the question, I'm looking for a building. What's on the agenda today is building our own building out at the shooting range, and therefore, if they want to use each of it with Waterloo Department, it'd be up to our Sheriff's Department. Tony, did you have something to say?
We're more than willing to work with Waterloo Police Department. We're more than willing to work with the Cedar Falls Police Department. Obviously, we continue to work with them. We share resources, and it has always been our vision that this facility would be occupied by largely those three agencies, their investigators and their lab technicians, and as well as ours, so we're not terribly passionate about where this thing is located, as long as we have a solution. Timeline on this, we identified this as a, as an issue for us about two years ago. We were moving at approximately one year ago to contracting once you approved Phase Two funding for our program, and then the Board decided to go to Baker Tilly Processing. So at about, just shy of a year ago, is when Baker Tilly then told you that we needed something, but let you know that the funding was questionable under anything but lost revenue. So we were working with Shive Hattery up until the point where the Board changed direction to actually go out to contract and actually start construction until the Baker Tilly process was implemented. From that point forward, we've been at a standstill and a stall. That's when IMWCA, ICAP, and everyone else has told you the issues with liability and things that we've got facing us as well. So we do have a health and safety issue with what we're doing presently. We continue to do cheetah flips, trying to work around still being able to provide forensic processes for those things that we're required to do for our investigative services, but at this point, that's the timeline that we're faced with. It's been right at two years since we've identified the issue, and it's been right at a year since your own consultants have been telling you that, yeah, this is clearly an issue. So it's nice to have it on the agenda. It's nice to continue to have the conversation. It's certainly nice that people are reaching out to other resources and finally listening to those of us that have been telling you, we've got problems, that this is something that the county needs, but we're still just talking while we still have problems. We still have the issue that we've got to get it taken care of, so we're ready to move. We're ready to do whatever you would have us do so that we can alleviate this as an issue for our staff.
It sounds to me as if there is some openness amongst the Board to at least, to have the conversations with the other agencies. Admittedly, I'm supportive of the project. I'm ultimately supportive if it is out at the current training facility. Going to recognize the need, but I also think that we owe it to ourselves to have those full conversations. I think if there's a way to engage a supervisor or two, namely one, not me, to have those conversations with other cities, the other partners, to see if we can't make this work, you know, we, it, to be honest, this issue was dead six months ago. You know, let's, let's be completely honest here. This issue was dead six months ago when the Board voted down the project. It has been resurrected at the request of another Board member, which is certainly within our purview, but to now say we've got to go, it, we've got to make a decision today when I think we might have an ability to find consensus with other agencies, with a broader consensus amongst this Board. I think it makes sense for us to do our due diligence to further, to further explore the possibility for partnerships. I'm intrigued as to where those conversations can go.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a trouble with what Tavis just said. The only problem is this has been dragging on for so long, and our employees are in harm's way. I've heard this before, that so-and-so wants to get involved, and they want to look at this property and that property, and in the meantime, we have employees that are performing duties that are harmful to them. The main thing that I was always told as the county supervisors, once we told, we were notified of a problem, and there was a liability there, we needed to act on it. That's the reason why this is back on the table, to get the ball going. I don't have much confidence that we're going to come up with another idea with another agency anytime soon, if it even happens, and that's the reason why I put this on the agenda today. Now, if this doesn't get a second and doesn't go through, then the majority of the Board has spoken, and we move on, and I personally don't know where it's going to go if we have further problems with employees.
I don't know, Chris, if you want to comment at all, or?
Yeah, I know, it's, it seems like we hear, it'd be honestly, it'd be nice if everybody, if we had these entities all in the same room at the same time with the Board and everybody, so that we're all on the same page of what people's interests actually are, because we, as we've heard throughout the process, that they're not interested, they are interested, they want to have support, they would have support, and so it'd be, the need is there, and so I ultimately want to see something happen, but it's, but if we're, right now moving forward with a scaled back version of this, that's, but also with the expectation that we're going to serve all these other entities as the future of this facility, I just, so ultimately, I'm supportive of doing something on this, but it's, but I want to see what, what those possibilities really are with the other large players, because if they've got the need, then they've got to do something too.
Chris, know that, number one, our facility out in Raymond is shovel-ready, right? There's no more hurdles, there's no more zoning issues, there's no water retention concerns, there's no, any of the other things that you would have to face. We're shovel-ready, just as we were a year ago when we were ready to go to contract. As we started scaling back, what we scaled back was not the actual processing center, not the forensic side, but was evidence storage. That's what we scaled back. So the things that we are able to take from our evidence storage facility here in town and, and move into a long-term, climate-controlled storage facility, those are the things that are being jeopardized by not being able to, to be able to store in this new facility. So you asked me a couple of weeks ago, is this forecasting for the future, is this the type of facility that, that we need for, you know, 10 years from now, 15 years from now? The answer is absolutely not. No. You know, a $2 million facility that gets us to what we originally planned for is what we geared that facility for, but having to scale back 25% cuts into that, so that's the honest answer. So when we cut back to 1.2 million to try and to reach that happy medium to entice the possibility of getting this constructed, we focused on the forensic side of it, not so much on the evidence storage side of it. So what I'm offering to you is a scaled back version that allows for that collaborative effort at a shovel-ready site, so that we can purpose-built and purpose-design a building that has the HEPA filtration, that has the drying rooms, that has all of those facilities that allow for it to be done in one foul swoop, rather than trying to figure out how to retrofit something into an existing building that creates, quite frankly, and quite likely, more expense associated to that. And what I'm trying to save the Board is the frustration, and quite frankly, probably the embarrassment that it's faced in other situations just like this. Please listen to me when I tell you that when we build it purpose-built the first time, and we build it right, we spend good money once.
Do you have any more question or conversation?
Yeah, I'm just thinking, you know, in my very first week as a supervisor, I was, of course, I have to deal with the jail parking lot, and it was a decision I had to make to save $30,000, and it cost us half a million, or whatever it did at that time, to take care of the asbestos, and so really trying to think of, you know, beyond 10, 15 years of what the need is, but.
Something that needs more thought, too, apparently. It's difficult. Well, I would say, as far as, we've talked about this subject, too, over a course of many months and years to some degree. many months and years to some degree, too. And we have talked about sharing assets, as well as cost-sharing and those types of activities with this facility. And I'm encouraged, I guess, by the, at least the conversation that you've had and the positive response, to at least consider it. Also, that Mr. Williams is wanting to be a part of it. I think that there are others that it sounds like are very interested in this subject as far as going forward. I will say it again, and probably say it on other projects, when I look at our reserves and our funds, I know projects are going to have to be funded. I don't know, I don't feel comfortable yet at where we're at, at weighing some of these projects against one another. And this one is one, obviously, that was on a hold for a reason, just to be considered later when we did that. So, like I said, I don't know if you are willing, or who would be willing as far as to kind of lead this. I don't see that it should take a lot of time for us to determine, I guess, whether or not it's something that we want to do or not, when you talk about the due diligence.
Well, I'll approach, at Waterloo City Council's next meeting, I will approach them and make them aware of the, I'll make the whole council and the mayor aware of the situation. I see there's a Cedar Falls council member here. I'll approach that board as well during their public comments. And I'll have conversations with County Attorney Williams, and see to what extent he wants to be involved, and I'd be interested to hear his input on it as well.
Well, I think, yeah, I mean, our budget sessions are right around the course. I think, we don't want to leave this just out there hanging for you, Tony. And so I would say that, you know, we need to, you know, be making a decision one way or another, and we might need to, we might look at including this in the budget this year, because we want to, you know, I think we should be considering, I'm reminded last week in the conversations with Johnson County, that we, you know, should be considering probably some level of bonding every year, so we can access revenue from the TIF districts. And so this is, you know, a potential there. So it's not just, we're not limited to just ARPA, we're not limited to just reserves for this. And we've got the big budget talks are just, you know, weeks away at this point. But we would want, you know, some kind of certainty from the direction that the cities are going to go, because clearly, we need to take care of this need. And if they're going to be on board, then they are. If they're not, then we've got to, then we'll have to move forward alone. But it's, I don't want to leave the sheriff's office hanging out there indefinitely again right now.
Deserve an answer or response? Yes, I would agree. I assume we could do this fairly quickly. I don't know. I mean, as far as looking at, yeah, we know, that's what I mean, to have a response. But you're certainly right, Chris, there are other options to look at and consider of how we would pay for it. Okay, are there any other comments or questions? When you have those meetings, I guess, would you report back to the board? So we don't know if you're going to meet. Thank you. Moving on to item I, discussion on community services funding applications. And this is on, basically, just because all of us know that the date was September 30 to be submitted, everything was submitted. I think Lori prepared a spreadsheet for everyone that had a chance to at least look like we had about 22 projects, probably the largest number we've had in a while. And we all know, we budgeted $100,000 for the category, and we have about $700,000 in requests, so, which, there are a lot of needs in the community, so I guess that shouldn't be a big surprise. But I thought some of the questions for us today, typically, this has been done during our budget cycle. It got kind of thrown out of it when we had the state auditor's directive to us that there were some things we couldn't fund. And so that kind of put us in a different timeframe for a couple of years. But I wondered, I guess, with the number we have, and the needs, and how we'd like to handle this, because we do want to get the money out into the community, but I thought some discussion on that, what kind of a timeline and the process, I guess. We've had presentations before, I know Tavis had asked about those, and I said, we usually do the, a few at a time, that's been during budget, but we can do them any way we'd like. So it was just kind of open for discussion today, I guess, of how we'd like to do it. I know one of the other things I noted, just in myself this morning, was back when we did the solid waste funding for these, that we did have a committee that made recommendations to the board. I don't know if that's ever something that we'd want to consider again. There are a sizable number that we have. But if it's, it's just open for discussion today, I guess, just to make sure we get some information on our website for individuals, letting them know what the plan is, and what kind of a timeline, if we can decide that today, if we can't.
I don't have anything.
I'm sorry. Tom, did you have a comment?
No, I just, I saw the list, also met through it. My opinion, some of them on there are ridiculous. We got one on there that's receiving taxpayers' money already through a referendum. You've got another one on there that we're paying monthly payments to with a contract that we never given before. So the only thing I can figure is, I figure the floodgates are wide open.
Well, I did think, too, there were probably maybe a couple in there. They needed to be further, I think, reviewed, just to make sure they all qualified. I don't know at this point that any of us have, if somebody's had an opportunity to look at them in depth, but I just thought there were some that maybe didn't meet the requirements.
I know there are a couple, I'm just thinking of the conversations from the year that we had, kind of had to transition because of the state auditors, and there were some things that were, that we ended up not entering contract, because it was just for, like, equipment. And so there's like, some big dollar ones, like a $120,000 kitchen, and some, like, security equipment and stuff. And so comment on the organizations, I'd like to see us do something with Black Hawk Run D., you know, health, but it's for, like, security equipment. And so it's, so I question whether that stuff is all eligible. But I, because we have to, we have to be able to enter in a contract with whoever we award. And so, but I, my thought was, you know, I do like having the presentations made, because it's part of how I judge kind of the accountability of the organization. I mean, some of them are very well-known, and reputation precedes them. But some of them, we don't know very well, and that's an opportunity to hear from them. So I would, it is a large number. But I would say, pretty much, if there is one way to do it, if there's any presentation from any organization supervisors want to hear, then we, then they make the list for, if any one of us wants to hear them, or we just invite everybody, but...
And take a few, I don't know, what were your thinking or thoughts on doing them at board meetings, just having, I mean, since we can do them anytime now, usually we've done it during a budget cycle for the budget request, but...
Yeah, I would think board meetings may be spread across a few of them, and, I mean, I'm okay scheduling a special Thursday meeting or something to, that's just these.
Do we typically limit the length?
Yes.
The 22 or...
Yeah, I'm just going to say they're usually less than 15. I wanted to say just 10, but yeah, I was going to say some are a little bit longer, depending on the Q and A, too. That's the opportunity for us to ask questions, if there are any new ones, or people that we haven't typically funded before, that, like I said, many are the ones that we've seen over and over again, but...
Well, for the Black Hawk County Libraries, the Dolly Parton's Imagination Library, don't we also have that on the ARPA list?
We did have them on there as a consideration, when they presented, I think, a budget or something. Whenever they presented once, I know they actually asked, and we talked about it being ARPA-qualified possibly, but I'm not sure that that one met. I don't know if it still did. We have it on the list, right, Michelle, but I don't know that it was...
It's never been approved. It is on a list.
List that they presented.
But I would remind you, you're down to maybe 1.1 million if we put in the security project, and don't talk about evidence intake, so that money. And I'm still, I know I sound like a broken record, but I've been doing this for a long time. I am very concerned about, particularly the health department. We don't have a design yet, so I don't know how solid the estimate we're using is for that. So I just want to caution you about that.
So for this one, we've got the, we budgeted $100,000 for this year, but there was 18,5 rolled over from the last completed fiscal year, is that correct, out of this fund?
Okay, well, it's not rolled over. There was 18,005 that wasn't used.
Back in the general fund, like, department budgets kind of do at the end of the year.
It all goes back to the reserves. There's nothing that we ever rolled over. By law, it has to go back to the reserves.
Press to use...
Well, I'll have to look back a minute. I thought, I thought when we had, when we had published this, we had had some discussion of utilizing that 18,000 towards this total.
I think we did when it was the current year, when it was still, it was open, maybe.
No. No, the discussion, the discussion that I recall was, when we, when we set this application up, we were having those discussions, it was putting those dollars towards this 100,000.
I think the intention was, we were going to do, and we didn't do it, but we were going to do a second round of applications.
Yeah, that was for the current year.
I thought it was around 50,000.
Yeah, but that was, not just like, what's your thought is on this, thinking there was funding there. We are close to budget, though, and I wondered if this is something we want to try to get back in budget schedule, kind of doing it then, like, you know, we had a process before, I think most of them submitted in November, or something like that, or December. We had a timeline. And then in January, they presented to us, and then by budget, we knew how many requests there were, and what the dollar amounts were, and that type of thing. I don't, and not for this, not for this year. I mean, this year, we have to do something.
I agree with that, because I think it gives us a better picture of, as we decide what that number is, so that we're allocating to the total pool for this.
Yeah. That sounds agreeable to everyone, to kind of start going forward and having it not kind of be in a different schedule. Thoughts on that, Tom?
No, I think that's great. Used to be, a few years ago, the board used to require that if you received money from the Board of Supervisors, the county, that you would give periodic updates. Seems like now, the only time the majority of them come is just to get their money, and you don't hear about it until the next year when they apply. I think it should be a criteria that they give us quarterly updates.
Have to go back and look at the application. I think we posted something on the website, and I'm not sure if it was as the board required them, or whatever. But yes, if we want to put in those special dates, or certain dates for them, we certainly can.
We may want to look at caps on the requests.
Requests?
On the requests. I mean, if you've got, if you've got a, your pool is 100,000, you've got a top applicant of 120. It just makes it a little bit harder to grade against each other.
It does.
You've got $120,000 request and $2,500 request.
Yeah, and on their end, it makes the, you know, I guess, a wet task war.
Correct.
It's difficult. Like I said, I think most have known in previous years, we've never met their, what they've put in for a request. It's always been something that the board's decided, a different amount. Some look at this, I know, as in other groups I've seen, too, it's kind of, this is the gap, or this is the need, and so they identify that, and then whatever the board can supply, great. If we wanted to do a whole project, I guess, that would be up to the board, too. We certainly could, if we saw something there that would be something you wanted to fund fully, but...
But to Dan's point, I don't think we have to limit ourselves to just 100,000, but...
I'm sorry, what was your, you must have missed that, sorry. What was your point?
CS utilized more than 100,000 for this endeavor.
For this particular ask, or going forward?
This particular ask.
So, well, it's certainly something, like I said, we can discuss and put on an agenda for, but as far as the process, or what we'd like to see, what's a reasonable timeline for evaluating? Because like I said, there's going to be, need to be a little bit of time spent on some that maybe don't, aren't meeting the requirements. And then just schedule the few that we need in the next couple of months.
Yeah, I'm trying to think through how you get through 22 presentations at 10 to 15 presentations, or 10 to 15 minutes per. That might be...
A few a week.
Yeah, for a few weeks, right.
Well, and soon, we're going to have budget sessions. So we don't want to drag this out too long, so we want to get them, have these done this year, correct? Or anybody not want to get moving on me?
Want to get moving as soon as possible.
Um...
And I'm game to meet on a Thursday as well.
We could do that, too. Does that work for your schedule as well?
Mm-hmm.
Work for you, Tom, too?
Sure, sure that works.
That's what we do during budget, we kind of limit it to have the Tuesday, Thursday sessions. Thinking we're all ready to the first of November, do we want to start doing Tuesday, Thursdays, maybe like after the, after a couple of weeks of evaluation here?
Sure.
Something like that, do, okay. Everybody's open to that, and I'll send something out on dates or whatever, to make sure confirms with everybody's schedule?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there anything else?
Well, do we settle on, are we inviting everybody, or are we all, if everybody goes through and collectively submits a list of, these are the ones I want to hear from, or do we want to just invite everybody?
I'd just assume invite everybody and get on the opportunity, just because sometimes that's where a case is made, that we didn't maybe understand from an application, and then we ask some questions, sometimes it's more, and to me, it's just more fair, equitable a little bit to everybody that applied, but...
That works for me.
Okay, okay. Super. Okay, anything more to discuss on community service funding apps? Then we'll move on to the closed session. Excuse me. This is a resolution that pursuant to the provisions of the Iowa Open Meetings Law by the authority of the Code of Iowa, Chapter 21.51I, the Black Hawk County Board of Supervisors shall proceed into closed session for the purpose to discuss the professional competency of individuals who appointment, hiring, or performance is being considered when necessary to prevent needless and irreparable injury to that individual's reputation, and the individual requests a closed session.
So moved.
Second.
Got through that, thank you. This is a resolution, please answer your names.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Jelka.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Layman.
Yes. Thank you. Well, I'm sorry, you don't get to... Great, thanks very much. Okay, well, I got a motion, the Board of Supervisors meeting closed session be adjourned?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All the same sign. Item, motion carries. Item 11, any reports or information from the board?
Just a heads up, that the board and staff and public are going to be invited, I believe, today, for the next two weeks, for a, as a part of the rebrand effort, to do a survey. It's a pretty quick and painless survey, about seven questions, just to get some, a little better measure of underlying sentiment about existing, and what folks would like to see in the next logo. So that'll be, you'll see it on social, you'll catch a link in your email, and there will be some posters distributed, not just here at the courthouse, but at the, throughout the community, and some of our rural sites, gas stations, grocery stores, that sort of thing, so...
Was Chris or someone going to, like, send out something that said where we were doing some of those, or how we were getting input, or?
Yeah, so, so, Chris is, has agreed to distribute those, to physically distribute those, and we can ask a list from him. There will also, you'll also get an email, probably from Lori or Chris, requesting 15-minute chat with board, a couple other elected officials and department heads, just to get a little bit more in-depth, have a little bit more in-depth conversation about usage, about vision, that sort of thing. So just a part of the process, but it is, it is still moving along.
Thank you. Any other reports or information from the board? Okay, hearing none, ask for a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Meetings adjourned, 10:34.